Want a different chair?
No, no, I just feel like I'm.
Yeah.
I would like to call to order the August meeting of the Mooresville Planning and Zoning Board. If you'll stand and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I've moved to adopt the agenda.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimously. Anyone find any corrections with the minutes? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the or to approve the minutes from last week.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor? Aye, that also carries unanimously. So, is there anyone here that has a public comment that's not related to the the new business on the transit oriented development plan? Does not look like that. So we can move on to the presentation. Mr. Lawson. I think, yes, everyone here is voting members, because there's five, yes, I'm sorry, I should have gone over that, but yes. We have five and five voting members.
Alright, good evening, so tonight, I will present about the Transit Oriented Development and Zoning Plan, so, what this, what this essentially is, is a proposed amendment to the 2021 land use plan. It will supplement the TOD East Subarea Plan with a full subarea plan for the entire TOD District, all three parts of it. So first, let me talk about how we got here tonight. So in 2021, the town adopted a brand new land use plan. It updated the 2009 land use plan. Since that time, staff have taken a few steps to initially implement the plan, including zoning text amendments for the the Go District along Marshall Parkway, installing the TOD zoning on the map, which which prevented further industrial development, and adjusting the airport overlay zoning, which also impacts the TOD. Staff had done a few other things, including creating standards for the Go District, again, that's along McCrimmon, and then amending the airport overlay standards. Simultaneously, the, while the land use plan is led by the planning department, other departments also have a part in it, and they're accomplishing projects from that plan, including, I just mentioned, closing sidewalk gap connections. So that was the initial land use plan implementation. We are now, as your staff, doing a full implementation project, and that includes three major steps. So the first one is before you tonight, that's a TOD Subarea Plan, and that includes both the the visual plan that is being presented tonight, as well as future text amendments to help the UDO align with that plan. So to to help, help create the development and regulate it, for, to help adopt a vision and then adopt UDO text amendments to install that vision. Again, that subarea plan is known as the Transit Oriented Development and Zoning Plan, and that's what you're reviewing tonight. The second step are zoning map alignments to amendments to align with the future land use map. And then the third one is a full UDO update to help align the UDO with the land use plan. So these are all things that are underway, and we're at that first step with the TOD Subarea Plan. So, let me talk a little bit about the TOD and why specifically TOD, so, the timeline is in ninety-eight, the first land use plan that I believe Marshall had briefly mentioned the need for a transit station in the area known as the TOD East. Now, this was the late nineties at a time when a larger rail system was being considered for the triangle, that did not happen at that time. Two thousand nine, the land use plan further described the need for a transit station in transit services and then transit style development, also in the area known as TOD East today. In the early twenty-tens, there was McCrimmon Transit Small Area Plan. It showed a general model and concepts for TOD style development along what was then the McCrimmon Extension, which is now the TOD West, TOD East, where the Sheetz is, that area. Based on the oh-nine land use plan, there were major amendments to the zoning map in the UDO, and that's when a zoning district known as the TOD was first created and put in the UDO. But that area was never installed anywhere on the zoning map. It was what we call floating district, meaning it was available for someone to use, but it was it was never used. So the current TOD standards were created in the early twenty-tens, and those remain today. So, the TOD zoning is in place, it's on the map, but the standards are from over a decade ago. So part of the TOD Subarea Plan, what you're looking at tonight, is bringing those standards up into, you know, twenty-twenty-three and beyond. So what's what's the vision for the town for this area now, not what it was ten, fifteen years ago? So with the, February twenty-one is when the the land use plan was adopted and updated. It showed a TOD land use area in three areas, so it expanded from the TOD East to include the TOD West and the TOD South. Later that year, the town installed the zoning on the map for the first time. So again, it had been in the UDO since twenty-fourteen, but it was never actually, the TOD zoning was never actually used until July of twenty-one. So since that time, between that time and late twenty-three, town staff has worked on a few other things, including the TOD Subarea Plan, which would amend the twenty-twenty-one land use plan to include, again, a full subarea for all three TOD Districts. And that's where we're at tonight, and then if the TOD Subarea Plan is adopted, town staff will write UDO amendments to help the development align with the plan. Okay, so that's the history, I said TOD hundred and fifty times, so. So, as part of this process, the town staff and our consultant, Hazel Levine, has done a number of stakeholder input. I won't read them, but these are the the groups before you, on the slides before you are the groups that we've done a majority of outreach to. I'll note the private developers of the experience building in TOD areas. Those have been super helpful in understanding what are the really the dynamics behind building in a transit district. But they've provided a lot of input on this plan. Go over, there's been a few work sessions with this group and with town council. I'll just kind of leave this on the screen for a minute, but our consultant, Hazel Levine, has has come and conducted work sessions, asked questions, presented pictures, different, gotten gotten different feedback to help get to these TOD Subarea that we have tonight. Okay, so, what what is tonight? So essentially, tonight, the the Planning and Zoning Board is asked to review the Transit Oriented Development and Zoning Plan and provide town council recommendation of approve, approval, approval of changes, or flat denial. Council will review the same plan, have a very similar presentation September twelfth and the twenty-sixth. So, you know, staff recommends approval for for these reasons, mostly because it aligns with the land use plan, what was adopted, and basically would allow for for us to draft UDO amendments to help align development with the plan itself. And then this is your action item, which we'll ask you to come back to later tonight. So, I skipped a big part, let me also introduce Nick Davis with Hazel Levine, he's sitting in the crowd. He is going to go over the plan with you after I'm finished, and afterward, we'll be able to take any questions that you have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you.
Alright. Good evening, thanks for giving us an opportunity to come back and present really where we're at now with the Transit Oriented Development and Zoning Plan. I'm hoping as we go through this, and I'm sure you have a lot of questions, as we go through this, you'll start to see your fingerprints on this, a lot of what we talked about in our last meeting, and then even in the roll-up when we had had conversations with town council. We've spent a lot of time over the last months, just getting this kind of fine tuned, more clear. It's more packaged than I think you saw it sort of in pieces before, so this is a lot closer to really what the final document needs to be and what we need to be talking about. So what I was gonna do and what I thought would be most helpful is we'll just, we're gonna go through the document, it's a fairly brief policy document. And as we're going through, if you have questions, maybe let me just go through the high level stuff first, then we'll just come back to it and probably go either page by page or topic by topic. Where I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, because we've, we've seen both the the vision, this is really just establishing what the intent of the overall TOD areas are trying to accomplish. We've outlined some of the the strategies for why you do TOD, you know, what the focuses need to be, what some of the the planning influences are, and even kind of tap into that, which is what we talk about in the next two pages. Showing up a little funky here, I think those are just transparencies, but hopefully in your printout or the packets that you have, it's a little bit more clear. But so on this page, what we're talking about here are the planning influences, and we had some boards up tonight, this is what we were talking about at the open house. A lot of these were just considerations, we want to make sure that we're not missing anything that's happening on the ground. Talks about existing conditions, it talks about some of the context around the TOD areas, some of the defining planning topics that are happening, such as the McCrimmon's flyover, the the rapid bus routes, the potential location for commuter rail. A lot of these improvements significantly impact what you can and can't do on this site, but also give a a big opportunity. So this is a chance for the town to start to take advantage of some of these improvements that are happening in and around the TOD area. The additional considerations, and there are several additional considerations, but these are the three that sort of rose to the top. Again, this is all content that I think for the most part you've seen. Property ownership can be a challenge sometimes when you're talking about parcel consolidation, working with a variety of property owners, and you can see, so in in TOD West, for example, you have fewer property owners to deal with, whereas if you're looking in TOD South or TOD East, there's a lot more property ownership, more consolidation, just more coordination, it doesn't mean it can't happen, it just means those are considerations to to work through, both from the town's perspective, but also something an investor or developer is gonna look at. The rapid bus stop and commuter rail locations and routes are a significant component of what make a TOD successful. So identifying those routes and considering those when we think about where to increase some of the density for the residential or mixed-use components, or where commercial districts would make the most sense, or how to leverage office locations are are things that the plan ultimately uses or was guided by. And the last part is just the the town imposed airport overlay, certainly in coordination with RDU. Between the town has happened a couple of times over, we're we're very clear about what we can and shouldn't be doing. Those are, those are considerations that went into ultimately the the building types and the building heights that we recommend. So, this looks similar to the map that we had talked about last time we were here, but there are some changes, so I do want to highlight those as we go through this. This is both based on feedback that we had collected from you, PCB, but also from the town council. So some of those changes, really including, I'll just, I'll kind of do this from TOD East, west to south. On the TOD East side, looking at TOD Residential on the northern side of Watkins Road, we're at five to seven stories, could go up to ten stories with some of those incentives put in place. But all, most likely, this will be a five to seven story build out for multifamily is the recommendation. At the corner of Watkins and Chapel Hill and C fifty-four, we have mixed-use buildings that are five to nine stories, so that would be sort of by right with these new, these new adjustments in the overall heights and the use types. But then again, could go up to thirteen stories. And then the Office Research Innovation, that blue ORI, is nine to thirteen stories. So this is, this is different than what's been proposed right now from other other developers or other builders. But again, is in line with what we would, we would expect to see in the future if you could allow more height. So those are what we want to consider and talk about tonight. Jumping over to TOD West, I'm gonna start from, we'll start from the kind of west side of the site. TOD Residential along Church, so right there at the corner, the kind of north, I'm gonna say northeast corner of McCrimmon Parkway, and Church would be five to seven TOD Residential, so multifamily. And then as you start transitioning further east into the site, you have five to nine stories of of mixed-use development. And then as we get close to the commuter rail and where the BRT or Bus Rapid Transit Route would have a stop, we have nine to thirteen stories for transit supportive mixed-use. So mixed-use and transit supportive mixed-use are, I'll say, almost identical in terms of what we're talking about, it's just the allowable height. So we're not letting that transit supportive use be adjacent to any, directly adjacent to any uses, either residential or commercial or whatever it might be. It's almost exclusively up against the rail, so that's just a, that's why it's such a different color and a different intent. And then in the TOD South, along Church and McCrimmon Parkway, we have a five to seven story TOD Residential that's along Church Street. Multifamily should have some, some first floor non-residential uses at key nodes, so that could be commercial components or, you know, some of the amenity components. And then as you get further into the site, so heading, heading east, you have more mixed-use, five to nine stories, with potential parcel consolidation. So assuming that over time, you know, you're gonna have this this road that is connecting into the McCrimmon Flyover to support some of the properties that are currently there, there's a few ranches, a few homes. Over time, if all of this is consolidated, you would have an opportunity to vacate that road, close it off, and you could, you could potentially build a little bit further north, a more connected development. Then as we get closer to the the rail line, again, that transit supportive use, that nine to thirteen stories, we're not up against any residential areas directly or against any other uses. And then to the south, we had TOD Residential, five to seven, could go up to ten. This is one where just because of adjacency being a an office building or an office use, you're not up against some other residential uses, we thought that was an opportunity to go a little bit higher. So I know that's high level, but as we go through this, we can come back to this when we talk about the building types and what that looks like too. So for the the TOD projects, we're really looking at four building types. There's TOD Residential, which for the most part is a minimum of five stories and a maximum of seven stories. There's mixed-use, which would be a minimum of five stories and a maximum of nine stories. That mixed-use component would have about a ninety percent commercial service ground floor. As we're trying to maximize a more active vibrant ground floor. We don't have a lot of, you know, residential components or parking components, things like that. And then for transit supportive, we have a minimum of nine stories, could go up to thirteen stories. Again, that's up against the rail exclusively, and then would have a ninety percent ground floor transparency with commercial and service type uses. And then the Office Research and Innovation would be a minimum of nine stories and again, a maximum of thirteen. And then in those, in those buildings where possible and at key nodes, we want to have a thirty-three percent either commercial or service use, just to take advantage and create that, again, more vibrant district as we're walking around in that area, so it's not all just office space. In the next component here, the next type, it's just the roadway types. So these have been pared down a little bit since we last met. You know, I think some of these started to get right-sized or more streamlined when we started seeing this getting incorporated into the model, which is, which is very common. It's why we do this exercise, so the three streets that we've identified, that would be a part of the overall programs for future developments. At the widest would be a ninety-six, ninety-six foot right-of-way for the main street. That would include a fifteen-foot sidewalk with an additional five-foot landscape, and I know that's tough to read, landscape and street furniture. So really from back of curb, technically back of curb to the building front, as you're looking at a twenty-foot kind of sidewalk shared space with, you know, outdoor dining, vegetation, street furniture, that type of thing. Then you have a five-foot bike lane, and then an additional three-foot curbed buffer raised from the the parking area, so that really starts to delineate where the bike lanes are, where bike infrastructure needs to be. It's a safer configuration, you're not at grade with cars, it also keeps cars from parking in the bike lane, that type of thing. And then a pretty typical, you have a nine-foot parking lane, you have a drive aisle of eleven feet, and then that's mirrored on the other side. For the major street, the biggest change there is just making a sidewalk that's that's eight foot, so it's not fifteen feet. We're bringing that down a little bit to eight feet, still a very walkable wide sidewalk, you can, you know, more than three people can be walking along it. You could incorporate outdoor dining in some of those areas, especially with that five-foot landscape and street furniture transition. So again, back of curb to the the front of a building is twelve feet, so that's, that's quite, I'm sorry, thirteen feet, so that's quite a wide sidewalk. And then same configuration as before, that five-foot bike lane, the three-foot buffer, and then we're into a parking aisle. And then a minor street, the the main thing there is we're pulling off the bike lane. So at this point, we've sort of throttled down the overall right-of-way width. You know, if someone's riding their bike, they're, they've made their, their more, I guess, complex turns or moved it along the roadway in a way that now they're just on a side street trying to get to their their final destination. So there wouldn't be as much, and and this is very common when you look at how bike lanes work, they're on some of the major roads, and then you start to use some of the local roads to just make your final destinations or final stops. Street feature or streetscape features, this was something that we talked about, I think, a lot through the Visual Preference Survey. You know, staff thought this was a very important component as part of this ultimate deliverable. So we talk about a couple of different key features that are important to making a successful streetscape. A lot of this, again, coming back to, and I feel like I'm saying this a lot, but vibrancy was a a main discussion point that we talked about with a lot of different groups and those that are interested in what the TOD can be. Wanted to feel walkable, wanted to feel welcoming, has to have a lot of the elements of the features that you would traditionally see in some of these more interesting districts. So looking at things like intersection and crosswalks, making sure that you're incorporating street trees throughout, you know, how we're we're doing that either in, you know, open, open lawn areas or open pit areas, there could be tree grates. We're also looking at things like planters, so you can get some vegetation built into that. Street lights and landscape beds are very important to kind of just build up the aesthetic and the overall look of the area. Street furniture is something that we talked about, we want to make sure it's programmed into the overall right-of-way width. Gateways and wayfinding are always important to these types of districts, one, to make sure people know how to get there, so signage to get you there. But then once you're in these districts, how am I moving around, how do I know where to go, where do I park? You know, where are the uses that I want to see, how do I announce that I've come into this significant area? Gathering spaces, so this is, this is gonna be a lot of different things. Plaza spaces, pocket parks, open space, both at the larger scale and smaller scale are things that we're gonna want to make sure, both at a policy level, we're talking about, but also when we transition into zoning, we want to make sure that this area has the appropriate amount of open space. So as people start to move in, both to live in these areas, but also shop, or go to their services or whatever it might be, that there's a lot of comfortable outdoor spaces for them to just have some pause moments or or meet up with people. I think that's something we've all learned in the last couple of years, is is really important is having these spaces outside. And then screening and buffering is a big component of making sure that this, even within the site, that we're screening and buffering components that need to be, but also how you're screening from some of the adjacent, either neighborhoods or roadways or infrastructure, like the highway or the the rail. So all different streetscape features, we want to make sure we're talking about as we start to to think out what these spaces want to want to look like. So I guess before I go into the models, are there any questions about the types? So when we talk about land use, when we talk about buildings, when we talk about roads and streetscape features, are there anything here that we want to jump into? No? Okay. Okay, great. So what I'll do now is I'm gonna go through each one of these these locations, we'll do TOD East first. TOD East is probably gonna be the most familiar in terms of look and feel, it's very similar to what we had prepared in the two thousand twenty-one land use plan. There have been some modifications, we've incorporated some some properties that we hadn't incorporated in that model. But also some of the numbers are changing just because of the overall height of the buildings that we're talking about and the change of uses that we're talking about. Some of the key takeaways, I would say, is we're, we're looking through this model is there's, there's more multifamily, there's, not more multifamily, but there's multifamily that's incorporated in that North Watkins Road area, a little bit different than what we had originally conceptualized as part of the, as part of the two thousand twenty-one plan. And then also, as I'd mentioned, just some of the height changes really open up this area to a more established district, you get more opportunity for employment. There's some more residential components, like I said up here, that that multifamily, that TOD Residential to the north of Watkins, you can start to see flush out. There are some challenging spots with that lot to the north, so I think being able to figure out how to to program that space is something that will need to be a consideration when you're reviewing plans for it. But you can just see a lot of this, so this deep blue is that Office Research Innovation area. Still incorporating the large open space, still have this mixed-use component where, you know, as you're coming in off of the main road off of Chapel Hill, you'd have this district established, you'd have an entry point, you'd have this open space all around. Could be some commercial components in these buildings incorporated into it. And then as you get closer up to the to the Wake Technical Community College, still some mixed-use, supported by parking decks in most of these buildings, with the office space kind of holding the corner as a relationship to that Wake Technical Community College space. Other considerations here, we're just tying in what would be two things, one, a connection to the potential commuter rail and bus rapid transit station. So that's on the other side of NC fifty-four, connecting you into TOD West. And then there, there would be some coordination with developers, just to make sure that if we need to incorporate parking for that commuter rail on this side of the TOD, so in TOD East, that would be a logical location for it. One of the requests that staff had, and we just, it's something that we'll incorporate in the next draft, is this building's orientation is not really ideal. So what we would do is flip this, and it'll, it'll really be a lot more aligned, similar what we have for this mixed-use building here. It'll be more aligned with Chapel Hill, so turn in front, you'll have less parking that's fronting Chapel Hill, I think that's a really good adjustment. So unless there's any opposition, that's a change we would, we would recommend making too. Any questions looking at the TOD East plan, any comments?
I have one, so, I mean, eventually they're gonna widen this road quite significantly, Chapel Hill Road, so how much are we accounting for that?
So these buildings.
With kind of these massing draw.
Yeah, so these buildings would be, can be slightly pushed back. Part of what we were doing was throttling that parking deck in between as much as we needed to, so depending on what the ultimate right-of-way width is gonna be for the, well, not right-of-way, but ultimately with the roadway width would be, you could see the buildings being pushed into the site just a little bit more, so something that can be accommodated for sure. Yeah, it wouldn't change fundamentally what we're showing here, really, at all. Not sure if that, did that answer your question? Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Thoughts?
Everyone's just waiting to load up later.
Okay.
I'll give you, I'll give you thoughts, I really like the layout of of the office buildings, so I think it's attractive, it's walkable, so from that standpoint, I think it fits in really nice, it gives a a place you can go out at lunchtime and feel like you get some exercise and not just stare at a blank building.
Great. And then the next site, so TOD West, just kind of working through a couple of different components, so what what we're showing on the TOD West side are, and you can kind of see this in the map, this main street that that cuts through the the site, major street that'll sort of connect you around, and then there'll be some of these minor streets that support, so again, just tying into the roadway types that we had talked about. One of the things that we wanted to highlight here is you have this main intersection coming in off of Church. As you're coming in off of Church, this would be your key path that would connect you into ultimately what would be that potential rail stop or the rapid bus stops. You know, back here, again, up against the rail line, up against Chapel Hill. And you can, you can really see how this is going to start to step up as we get further and further from the west to the east. So we have, you know, four to five-story, five-story buildings, multifamily buildings along Church. As we get deeper into the site, you'll have five to seven-story mixed-use buildings, so commercial on the ground floor with residential components above. This big open space that we'll use is sort of like a wraparound, so you could see like these mixed-use buildings would walk out into this open space. Um, so you could see like these mixed-use buildings would walk out into this open space. Most of this is served almost entirely by parking decks. So each one of these buildings would be supported by either their own parking deck or a shared parking deck. Um, and then as we get closer to the transit location and closer to the rail line, that purple just shows where it's going to step up and we're into that transit supportive mixed use. So those, those buildings are going to be, um, you know, by right, a little bit taller. It could be nine to, to thirteen stories. So same thing, I, I think just trying to work through the program here, um, and maximizing the space to the best that we can. You know, just showing what the potential block structures could be and, and where these use programs need to go. Uh, some of the things to also note is just a connection. So, you know, what would the potential greenway look like? How would it come in and around the McCrimmon flyover? It'd be back behind these buildings and then uh, cutting through here, there's a, a supporting lot for the transit station and the BRT. So there's a parking lot back here. And then right here is where the um, the potential greenway would, would meet up with that station and then continue north into Shiloh Park, just to connect Shiloh Park to the rest of the area. Any thoughts or questions?
I have a question. Um, so for this one on the west, and I don't remember, maybe on the east as well. Um, it looks like some of these um, residential buildings out in front on Church Street, their view is going to be basically um, taller buildings deeper into the plot or um, parking garages. Is that right?
So if you're in here, their view, are you talking about the existing? I'm not sure what you're talking about. Oh, okay. So the proposed, so the proposed residential, for the most part, is going to be looking at multifamily, looking at mixed use, looking at open space, mixed use and, and multifamily. So for the most part, no. Very, very little of this is going to be looking at a, a parking deck. It'll be looking at other, other similar uses. Some of it might be scaled up a little bit taller. It could be. Um, for the most part, it'll be a similar use type.
I mean, the people on the other side get to look at the cricket park.
Yeah, on the other side, yeah, you're looking back at the cricket park. So depending on if these are single or double loaded, those will be considerations the architect will probably want to consider.
So that, this reminds me of a question I had when I was looking at this earlier. Like, so how, like, the, the shapes of the taller, the nine to twelve buildings? If you look at back in the original, it's the sort of the two-dimensional plan, those areas look at least a little bit to me smaller than this. I mean, I guess is the idea be sort of a more of a seamless blend? Or are we going to have kind of like this section that's, I mean, how is that going to be implemented as we go forward? I guess is my question.
Are you seeing like, how are we zeroing in that this is where that area?
Well, right, well, if you look, if, if you compare this to the plan in the very beginning, there's a pretty narrow line there that says nine to twelve.
Yeah, like right here.
And so like, you, on the three-D drawing, it even shows the mixed-use lower kind of curling around a little bit into that. So I, I guess the, that's what I was wondering is how do we craft something that sort of, and I guess that's why we have you guys here?
Yeah.
You know, to be careful and thoughtful about how, you know, do we want to restrict it to this one little thing? Do we want to, you know, how, how does that work in the actual nitty-gritty? Or I guess that's where the rest of the work is.
Yeah, so um, let me see if this answers your question. I'm not, uh, because I, I, I think I understand what you're asking, but this land use types and the, the land use program that we're showing here is not, you're not going to lay this down on an aerial and be, this is it. This is where, it's an intent. So I think this is, this is actually a really good example of, you know, we have this, this fairly shallow line and it does bump out a little bit here. Um, it's just, are you meeting the intent? And this is something you would work through with a potential developer or an architect as they're going through. If they're pushing that all the way into the middle of the site, they're no longer meeting the intent of the original concept. If it's, you know, within that wiggle room, and that's, that's really up to the town to determine whether or not someone's appropriately within the threshold. Um, and it's one of those things where I think you just want to see different options. And if it, if it's doing what you want it to do and it's consistent with the plan, um, it's something they can move forward with. Is that okay? There needs to be flexibility in this plan for sure. As we move into zoning, yeah, as we move into zoning, you can start to remove some of that flexibility. But the plan, this is policy, right? We're just trying to make sure that we're all generally moving in the right direction or in the same direction. And then once you get into zoning, the zoning's not going to carve out a very specific parcel. It's going to say, okay, now that you have signed off on, this should be transit supportive mixed use. Here are the parameters you need to adhere to for transit supportive mixed use. So this does give you a little bit of flexibility, both from a PCB and town council perspective on, are we meeting the intent of the, the TOD plan?
I have a question about Church Street. Is there, are there plans to, that's a state street. Are there plans to widen that as well?
So one of the things the town's going to need to do is update its, or I guess evaluate and update its CTP plan to be more consistent with the recommendations within the, the TOD plan. So as far as our plan is outlining, we're not talking about what needs to happen on church, but certainly considerations and impacts from what we're talking about here are going to need to be folded into the CTP. I don't know if staff wants to add to that, but that's, that'll be a recommendation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add slightly to the last two questions. That's right. So the way I think about the land use categories, we'll start with that is where there's a TOD zoning district, within that, there's three subsections. Within that, there are different land uses. So it's almost like the, the dolls that are smaller that they come out. So so we'll narrow that down with the zoning, get more specific at that point. As far as Church Street, it, it, it's a great question. So I'll say, the first thing with Church Street is it's not currently shown to be four-lane, but it is not also widened to its full extent now. So there will be curb and gutter added as a part of the current transportation plan regulations. The, the other two parts are that with these developments, these are almost certainly going to trigger transportation impact analysis, which are going to require a study to show what improvements need to be made. And those will have to be made with development. And then the last thing is, as Nick said, the town, um, the current transportation plan was approved, was, was started probably four or five years before the TOD was considered with the land use plan. And then the land use plan was adopted years after the transportation plan. So what that means is we're coming up on the next cycle of transportation plan review and, and examination. And so that'll be included in, within the next transportation plan.
Thanks, Chris.
Can I ask a question? So with that timeframe, um, I'll, what's the timeframe for that? Take a look at that update and update, also to consider in there conservatively for construction? Because right now you got virtually two lanes, one, one way, one the other way on that. And it's hard enough already on Church Street to deal with that. So just kind of an idea, my frame, nothing in stone, but.
Sure.
How many years?
Thirty?
We, it is on the radar as something we'll need to go back and look at. We take um, regular stock of our different plans that make up the comprehensive plan on a pretty regular basis. It's because the town is growing so quickly, those plans become out of date faster than they might in another location. So it is something that we're looking forward to, that's on the radar. Um, but ultimately, all of that starts to factor into the budget process from year to year. Um, it, I can't give you an exact timeframe right now.
Don't ask for exact, Mr. Ralph.
And, and keep in mind that when, what we're talking about, the transportation plan is just kind of like what we would eventually have there to, so that developers, as Chris was saying, would do it. We, we aren't necessarily talking about approval to, to widen the road. Yeah.
I'll save my other questions till the end. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question that might be more for the two of you. Um, is the town currently have plans to widen McCrimmon?
Say that again.
Does the town currently have plans, the town or the state to widen it?
Yes.
McCrimmon?
Oh, yeah.
And that's going to be from Davis down to fifty-four?
That's right, yeah. It'll end at the, the flyover that heads over and wraps behind Sheets from Davis.
So that doesn't really impact like the TOD districts that we're talking about or the development plans that we're seeing here?
Well, uh, it, it impacts it, but it's represented in this plan, the, the widening.
Yeah, tho- those plans, sorry, I thought, those plans are essentially set at this point, so we know what the extent of the right-of-way will be, where it'll go.
Because that starts relatively, relatively soon, right? The next couple of years, I think.
I think last, last I heard was late twenty-four? Okay.
If we can plow forward?
Any other? Yeah, I'm keeping up. Uh, any other questions, comments about this one? Uh, and then TOD South, so a, a similar program. And I think if you can think back to some of the, the initial site plans that we had shown, just different programs for this site. We had this main street cutting through uh, with, you know, this major street as a, as a thread uh, connecting kind of the, the overall route. And then there's a couple of minor streets cutting through, so you can kind of see what this would look like um, programmed out. So again, off of church, uh, we have slightly lower multifamily buildings. So uh, TOD residential, that's along church. You can see where that greenway is cutting through. Um, the greenway could go a couple of different routes, but the one that was preferred when we had done some of these discussions were it running along and coming close to church and then connecting into uh, McCrimmon right here at this uh, signalized intersection. And then it would continue into the TOD, um, TOD West. The other components, so you have this main street that's coming into the site, uh, similar to what we had talked about on the north. This would be a fairly large uh, central green space, public gathering space surrounded by mixed-use development. Um, so this building would really have a shared use and, and a parking deck internalized. Um, so we have mixed use completely fronting the uh, the open space. And then we have a lot of mixed use that's coming down this way towards some of the taller multifamily where we had talked about before. You know, that, that multifamily can start to step up as you're getting away from some of the residential areas and getting away from some of the other adjacent uses that would have a negative impact from that. Um, and then as we get closer to the rail, you have that transit supportive mixed use with some commercial on the ground floor across from a, another shared open space or a large public space. Um, some of the multifamily that's along this rail, maybe as we're getting further south, wouldn't make sense for it to have commercial component. It might not be a viable or a visible location, um, being tucked back in the corners that, that makes more sense for residential. Uh, and then up, up through here, you can start to see kind of the same principle. Um, this is largely a mixed-use building, but where some of it might start to get tucked behind a building um, or off a main street, not enough vis- visibility. You know, we would recommend that maybe being more like ground floor uses or amenities for the building. So it could be residential amenities. Um, could even be like access to some of the surface or the parking deck, that type of thing. This is showing a, a fire access drive that would be needed, a secondary entry point to the TOD just for emergency purposes. Um, it aligns pretty closely with the access point that's being left behind for the residential uses that are currently there. So you can kind of see how this all being consolidated. You get a multifamily on the north side and mixed-use buildings to the south. Um, we do show mostly this being served by parking decks. Um, there are some opportunities to maybe visualize what a surface lot would look like. Um, but again, that would be something that is part of the, the architecture and the overall intensity or density of the building. Um, a parking deck or a surface lot would have to be something that a, a developer or a builder would need to consider. Um, are there any questions? We do show an access drive, uh, future access for future vehicular and pedestrian connections to the adjacent property. Uh, we show them in two different locations. So if that southern property does ever redevelop, um, you'd have some access points into it.
Is that that Masonic Lodge that, isn't that where that stops right there?
Yeah, so like back in through here. Um, any other, well, any questions about this, this site or this recommendation? No? Um, okay, well, so that, I mean, that's high level, the, the overview, the presentation of the, the TOD plan. Um, I guess if there's any larger questions that anybody has, you want me to go back to, to any section? We can do that now. It sounds like you might have had a couple of additional questions.
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
Uh, as I talked to you before, the renderings are, are great. I really appreciate this. But on some of these programs, if you had to take a look at least likely, most probable and high utilization, your examples you're putting out here is maximization of the property itself. Is that true?
That's a fair assessment. Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and I know I caught you earlier with it, but what is the, um, and it's not with the plan itself, but it's an auxiliary thing which is important too. Based on the ADTs now and projections on these, is there other scenarios that you could utilize or show, not necessarily depict them on a picture basis, but to show uh, the impacts with the ADTs onto Church Street and McCrimmon uh, from these developments? Uh, not showing directional or anything, but this is what it's going to create, what we anticipate with traffic and that type of the thing.
I mean, based on the unit counts that we're talking about, you, you could run a traffic analysis of what the impacts would be from a min, a min and a max assessment, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, least likely, most probability and then high, which I think this is a good job of maximizing the property.
Yeah, and this, and even, even these renderings are showing, for the most part, the minimum build-out potential based on what we're talking about from a recommendation standpoint. So this doesn't show us maxing out every building at every um, high end of the height, the max point that we talked about. But to, to your question or maybe to your point, um, yeah, you could certainly run an analysis based on the amount of units that we're talking about. We put that in the table on the, the page before about what the output is going to be from getting into and out of this site. Certainly as a developer, anybody who comes in and proposes something, they're going to have to go through that traffic analysis, that traffic study. Um, again, I think this ties right back into the, the comment about the town needing to reevaluate what their recommendations are in the CTP and getting that timed out with whenever this development could occur. This isn't going to happen right away. It's going to take some time to consolidate. It's going to take some time to go through planning. Um, there's some other challenges with the site when we start talking about um, some of the brownfield considerations and, and what those challenges might be. But yeah, you either require it as part of the, the study when they come in, um, and they're proposing something. If the town wanted to proactively conduct that study, you could do that as well. Yep.
Just one other question with that, bringing that up. On the west portion of it, um, I, I love the east portion you have, the west portion. When you took a look at doing this plan, you took a look at that property being virtually virgin and no contingencies of what could not be developed because of the super fund and the lack of remediation at this point.
Yeah, so that was something that we had talked about at the beginning of the project is, and can kind of to the phrasing that you used before. Not necessarily to maximize, but to show what the potential on this site could be. Um, with a, a caveat that there is a, there's a, there are issues with brownfield development. One, we don't have a full assessment of what is actually happening on this site or what has happened on this site or what the extent of the issues would be. So certainly before anybody moves forward with actually building this, they're going to have to go through that process and identify. Yeah.
And just to point to that, it, there's brownfield and there's super fund. This is a-
And this is a super fund, you're right. Yeah, exactly.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Nice job.
Thank you.
How far north and south is the plan going to extend? Like, it looks like north, it probably ends right around Wake Tech. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I'll just go up to the, the study area boundary. So you have, uh, for TOD East, you're at the Watkins Road. Watkins Road cuts down. There are I think about six or seven parcels, um, that are up on the north side of Watkins Road. And then if you can picture it, there's a, a perimeter park. There's two main buildings on this far east side that, that's our defining edge. We come all the way down. We're just north of the Sheets at uh, the McCrimmon Parkway current alignment. Um, and then Chapel Hill all the way up. So that defines TOD East. TOD West stops at Shiloh to the north. And you're all the way down to where the current McCrimmon Parkway and Church um, defining edges are. And then church, um, down to this, this large, is it a temple? Masonic temple to the, to the south is what?
In the front is a small building, in the back is the Iron Mountain.
Iron Mountain, that's what I was thinking of. Yep, yeah, exactly. So that's a pretty large building that's over on the, the south side of the site. And then the rail is the, the finding edge.
How many current parcels are going to be affected?
How, so, do you, how many, um, maybe I don't understand the question?
Well, I mean, you've got to acquire some property for this, correct?
Oh, yeah. So, um, depends on if you take this all at once. So let's say someone wants to move in on the TOD West side. You would have to uh, consolidate at least four or five of these parcels just on the TOD West side. So this map shows all the different parcel and different property ownership relationships that you'd need to coordinate to, to develop any one of these. So there isn't one single ownership for any one of the TOD areas. It would require parcel consolidation or phases.
Has there been an assessment of what it would cost for the acquisitions that are needed?
We did not do a fiscal analysis as part of this study to determine, yeah. Um, but that is something, again, that the town could do to get a better understanding of what it would cost. And then also, I, I think something that's important to keep in mind is this plan is not advocating or recommending that the town buy any of these parcels. It would be something that would be led by developers or investors. Yep. And there is interest from some property owners to sell. I think that's important. I mean, we've talked to a lot of different stakeholders. Um, but yeah, certainly what the, the fiscal impact would be to purchase all these par- uh, parcels are, are going to be a major consideration from a developer's perspective.
I think it's great layouts. My concerns are always the same. It's too early in the game, but it's around the movement of trucks and that they have indoor dock doors for everything from mail to deliveries that that's designed in from the beginning. But I think otherwise it works great as long as traffic is moving and we can keep trucks and utilities off of the main streets and somehow into the parking garages.
Yeah, and that, that was something that we actually do talk about, uh, in the streetscape feature section. We talk about screening and buffering and that, that includes utilities and that type of infrastructure. You want to do the best that you can to remove it from some of the key streets. And that's, that's something too, we would talk about in zoning, for sure. And that's, that's something too, we would talk about in zoning for sure.
Nick, great presentation. Wish I had a fast forward button to see what this is ultimately going to look like.
Me too, yeah.
I think it's important, a couple of issues in the draft. Commuter rail should probably be eliminated to just rail at this point based on advice from the Federal Transit Administration. I do have concerns now that that has been thwarted, that less rapid transit will, since that's going to probably, for the time being, be the primary source of what transportation, what transit will be available there, that developers will be less inclined to build it out as quickly. But yeah, I think, I think it's great. I'm very excited.
Yeah, I had some questions along the same lines about the rail. I mean, it's, it's definitely not going to happen. And unfortunately, it's probably never going to happen now because more development, I never say never, but I mean, more development is going to occur in the same haphazard pattern without something to guide it. And this is the second go around where we spent ten years doing something and got, you know, we didn't do it.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's my concern is rail provides inflexible development. So for ERT, you, you put down a study, a community biz study that shows some, you know, they're, they decided they want to move the station when now it's not.
Right. So that's a blessing and a curse because of this type. So I mean, it, it is unfortunate that so much of this does talk about commuter rail and now, you know, it's, it's definitely not going to happen, at least in the next decade, I would put it so.
Yeah, I wish I, I mean, Josh, to your point, I wish I could fast forward and tell you where it's going. It's a good point though. Any other questions, comments, suggestions, things we need to be thinking about as we move forward before we go to town council?
I think that was, that was very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And I appreciate your time. So I'll just step over here if you have any questions.
In case there's any more questions that arise, but. Chris?
All right. Thanks, Nick. Well, I'd go back to my own PowerPoint and basically I, I restate the staff recommendation, which is approval of proposed land use plan amendment. Same three reasons. Essentially, it, it follows with the land use plan is adopted and it will allow adoption of this vision will allow town staff to draft zoning text amendments to essentially permit development in the vision that the town adopts. Your action items tonight is this resolution. And then we can take any more questions if they, if they come up.
Any other questions? So do we have, have, what, do we have a statement or anything that we need to read for this one?
Yeah, it's, it's not a zoning ordinance.
Okay, so we don't need to do the official sort of way. So we can just take a motion to approve or disprove the plan as we've been presented.
Chair, before the board might move forward and do that, just wondering if there's any members of the public that want to comment?
I'm sorry, that's a good, good point. Yeah. Would you like to, anyone here would like to make any comment on this plan or ask any questions? Okay. So then we'll, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two zero two three dash two nine six dash zero approving the transit oriented development and zoning plan.
Any discussion or motion? All in favor? Aye. You're, and all, all against? Are you?
I'm saying no for the resolution right now. You voted for.
Okay, right, okay, you, okay. So you're, you're a no vote? Okay, thank you. So that's forty-one for, to recommend approval. Thank you. Okay, so we can move on to staff comments. Did you want to add any discussion or anything? I mean, you do not. Well, it's just, it's helpful sometimes for the council to be able to hear. That's.
Thank you.
So I'll provide just a quick overview of your June, July planning newsletter, because we did have a meeting cancellation. This is a combined newsletter this month. But we did receive a new site plan application in for the Latino Community Credit Unit. That's a, a proposed on Chapel Hill Road. In terms of town council approvals, two items that were recently reviewed by the PZB were approved by town council. That includes the rezoning at nine hundred and thousand perimeter park and the proposed text amendments related to murals. I will note that the EV UDO text amendments that you also reviewed are still in the town council review process. Those are anticipated right now to go back to council on September twelfth for potential action. Administrative approvals that occurred at the staff level included Morrisville one point oh, which is a mixed use development on Airport Boulevard. Kind of, it's really in that McCrimmon corridor area, but with frontage on McCrimmon. And Morrisville two point oh, also located on the McCrimmon Boulevard as well. Both of those multifamily developments. In other news mentioned, the EV parking regulations are still under review by council. Council has also continued to have meetings on affordable housing and affordable housing implementation. In terms of the, the work that we're doing with our consultant HRNA, it does look like the zoning incentive policy will be brought back to town council on August twenty-second for adoption of that policy. And we are continuing to work with council on the framework for a down payment assistance program and exploring opportunities on how we might be able to partner with Wake County to kind of leverage any town dollars to the best ability possible. So those were the two components of the HRNA work. First one, the zoning incentive policy wrapping up. And then down payment moving along as well. Throughout, through those discussions, town council has also expressed interest in evaluating a couple of other options moving forward, namely, potential land donation and partnering with Hep Tep for Humanity or Wake County on, on a capital project. So we're looking into that as well. We did present to council information about land that the town currently owns. And they picked three properties for town staff to evaluate further for a potential partnership. So we're just beginning that work. And then town center, exciting to see that moving along. That plan development rezoning application is now in and under review. So we're hopeful that that's going to make its way to the PZB here in the near future as well. But that's all I have in terms of the newsletter. Would also note that we are looking to schedule a joint meeting with town council and the Planning and Zoning Board. Date yet to be determined. Council meets, I think more regularly with some of the other boards, kind of on an annual basis. But with PZB, a lot of times your agendas are set. It's by the UDO with different development and comprehensive plan items that come to you. So I think, you know, they haven't sat down and talked to this board in a while. So just wanting to, to have a conversation and touch base. So if there is anything in particular, there, particular that any of you are interested in discussing with the town council, if you could email me or give me a call, let me know. We're going to be working over the next month or so to try and nail down a date for that meeting and put together an agenda. So if you could give that a little bit thought, a little bit of thought and let me know if you have any ideas of, of things you'd want to talk to council about, that would be helpful. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, start with Josh, board comments?
I will say, going off the affordable housing, I had brought this up at TOD open house to a couple of staff members, but I know Department of Transportation just announced thirteen point four million dollars in competitive grant funds for funding that'll support local planning and TODs for sustainable and equitable housing. So that's available for the planning component out there.
I just want to say how much I appreciate the land use plan finally coming together and the transparency that the entire team used. I learned a lot during the process as well as learning a lot from members in the communities, not only from these meetings, but calling in, especially the airport overlay was a real learning for me, a real learning process. So it was good that you shared that and opened it up to the community to participate.
I just want to say you had a great open house. I thought it turned out, like to have seen three hundred people, but it was really good. And the presentation, the layout, the consultant and the planning department's done is, is good. I really think you did a great job on it.
I will echo those comments. Thanks, Chris. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Do wait a second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.